Thank you. Welcome to everyone and to those viewing online to the meeting of the Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue Pension Scheme Board on Friday 10th of January. Tom, have we had any apologies?
Yes, apologies from Mark Baxter and from the officer's side, Naomi Clark.
Thank you. Second point, are there any declarations of interest that need to be made? No, that's a no from everybody. Okay then, so to the next point, the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. Does everybody have a copy in front of them? So, this is page one of the minutes, page three of the pack. Any points need to be raised from that? Any actions? No. Page two. Any issues to raise there or any actions that need to be discussed? No. Page three. Okay, so we've got a couple of actions at the bottom there. The board plan be updated and the risk register be updated. Confirm that was completed? Yeah. Page four. Any issues? No, no actions. Page five. Happy. And page six. Right then, confirm the meeting minutes from the previous meeting are all in order. Can we have a proposer? And a second. Okay, so the meetings are, the minutes are accepted. Do we have, West Yorkshire online? Okay. So the next agenda item is the performance data from the West Yorkshire Pension Fund.
Hi, yeah, obviously you've got your copy of the December bulletin or report in your pack. So, you know, I don't really propose to go through everything in detail. But does anybody have anything they want to raise on the KPI performances at number one? There's obviously, there are a couple of areas that we haven't met the target with an explanation as to why underneath. But again, we've got to be just aware that it, because we don't process a huge number of cases for yourself. It's four cases, four people. And as it says there, the refund quotes, you know, they are kind of lower priority. The people who've left with less than three months' membership. So if nobody's got anything to raise there, you've just got all the different graphs as normal on the work in progress. You've got your web registration numbers that follow and your scheme update of the scheme membership numbers with the associated number of graphs. And then you just, item five, number five is the administration update. So we're just confirming there that if, if for any reason you need to complete a paper appointment form, and that could be for mainly now for new Matthews cases, that that form is editable from our website. So also going into Matthews, we've just given, we've just given kind of more updates on where we are and what's going on. So request for data to complete the GAD calculator, then there's another item on the GAD calculator. So there's just a few bits there on Matthews. So really with Matthews, it, when you get to the point that you're looking to send the information to West Yorkshire, if you can just double check back through these client reports, because we've covered in here, you know, what we need for us to be able to progress. So that will allow you to send what we need without kind of any of us having to come back or anything. Then we've provided an update on the ABS RSS, because initially we said that we were hoping to be able to produce them by the 31st of December. That's passed and we obviously haven't. So we're now looking at the absolute deadline date of the 31st of March. And we have written to all affected members to let them know about the delay and the position that it currently stands. We've then got just data checking and just a reminder to FRAs if they can double check any data or forms that they send to us. And just some examples are making sure that we get medical certificates for ill health retirements at the same time as we get the retirement notification. When you're dealing with an ill health retirement, make sure that the assumed pensionable pay issue has been investigated and the assumed pensionable pay supplied where appropriate. And also when sending the retirement spreadsheets through to us, just double checking the figures that have been supplied. We get, and this is not specifically at Lincolnshire, this is a more general update. But we, we get spreadsheets in where the pay figure drops from the year before. And where the pay drops, it highlights red, but then we're just getting the spreadsheet sent through with no explanation about why it's dropped, no checking to say whether actually that, the reduced pay is right. If we're getting reduced pay and it is correct, we would expect a split pension or a protected pay notification to be coming through as well. And this isn't happening, so we're having to generate a query, then we're having to kind of do it. So all this just delays getting the retirement pack out to members. So it's just a reminder that if these things can be checked through before the send, then that'll be really helpful for all confirmed. Again, then there's just a bit about what kind of meetings and national meetings we've been, so what bits of training's been done. Your member updates, there isn't any specific individual member updates. And then there's an IT, short IT update there on systems and amendments for all, to get us in a position to be able to produce the ABS RSS. And then a little bit of information on the pension dashboards, although I believe that you've all been, all FRAs have been sent quite a detailed document on pension dashboards and where we are and the process and information about the matching data criteria and that kind of thing. But that was sent separately. And then everything else is just the normal stuff, normal things, the, what we're looking to be audited and when. Anything about the overriding disclosure time limits and the calendar of events. And then into at pound 12, into the stuff that comes out of the LGA bulletin, which again is just a repeat of what you see in the bulletin. But we just try to collate it all in the same place. So that's your December bulletin, if anybody's got any questions on any of that.
Thanks Helen. Yeah, Paul, did you have a question?
Just about responsibility of providing that information. Is, how, where does this, okay, thank you.
Helen, if we could just return to the KPIs just briefly. The dependent pension to set up did not meet. There's a delay in receiving the completed child pension claim form and certificates. Who's responsible for those and that delay in that case?
Really, the person?
So that's the?
Yeah, the beneficiary person.
Okay, fair enough. Brilliant, thank you. No further questions? So the next agenda point then is current issues with an update from Liz Hipworth.
Thank you. For IDIP cases, I'm pleased to say we've had none. For breaches, we've had none. I'll then go on to the pension project work that we've got. And of course, we've got the two projects. We've got the Sergeant McLeod Age Discrimination Remedy, and we've got the Matthews Second Options Exercise. I'll start off with the Matthews, sorry, I'll start off with the Sergeant Age Discrimination Remedy. So we've got 473 individuals who are actually in scope of that remedy. And of these, 183 are also in scope of the Matthews Pension Buyback, which is the Second Options Exercise. Since the introduction of the legislation on the 1st of October 2023, we've had 18 retirement notifications. 13 of these have chosen legacy scheme benefits and two have chosen reformed scheme benefits. And we've got three more in process. Just in practical terms, I'm thinking, Paul, for yourself being fairly new to the board, when we get retirement notifications and those in scope of the Sergeant, it comes to me and my team, there's literally only the three of us dealing with this work, is that, as Helen says, when we do the retirement notification, it goes off to West Yorkshire. We actually do send it to Helen, so it's a one point of contact there, but then Helen obviously disseminates it within West Yorkshire. But when the figures are calculated and they come back to us, they're given two sets of figures. And then obviously there's, they come back to us, so it's all controlled, so we know it's just going according to plan and we can chase up as appropriate. And then if the individual has got any queries, they know who they can come back to as well. But it's literally West Yorkshire, just spell it out, whether they want to go through the old legacy scheme benefits or it's the current reformed scheme. They've got the breakdown of the two sets of figures, how the figures have been arrived at. And of course, it's then down to the individual for their particular circumstances, which is best for them. So hopefully that just gives you a bit more of a, what we're actually doing. And, you know, going back to your point about who's responsible, so all of this kind of thing, it sits with me at the moment. Now going on to the Matthews Second Options Exercise, the first options exercise was about 2014, 15. And those that were on call that were not able to join the pension scheme originally, obviously it went through the courts, it got challenged. They said, yes, it was unfair, because of course it was about the part-time workers, less favorable treatment legislation. But they could only buy back to the year 2000. So of course it was, so that was the first options exercise. Again, it was challenged through the courts, which is, well, if you're saying it's unfair, why have you limited it to being able to only buy back to the year 2000? Hence, we've now got the Second Options Exercise. And what it means is people can buy back right to their continuous start date. And of course, they're buying back into the 2006 Modified Pension Scheme, which actually is, I think if I'm right in saying Helen, it's mainly based on the old 1992, which was a closed scheme. But of course, then we had the 2006 scheme, but that was for the whole time. So this was the 2006 Modified Scheme. So it's just a bit of a play on words, but I don't think people realise that link to the 1992. So I'm hoping Helen, that if I've said anything untoward, that I hope I haven't actually said anything untoward by saying what I've just said.
No, that's fine, yeah.
Great, thank you. Voice of reason in my head. The, so for those in scope of the Matthews Second Options Exercise, we've got 710 individuals in that exercise. 346 have actually said to us they wish to get the costs. 21 individuals have actually said they don't want to receive the costs. Even though they've said they don't want to receive the costs, we will still be writing to them anyway to say, I know you said you didn't want the costs, but here's the breakdown. Are you sure you don't do it? Because it could be that people have misunderstood and actually when they see the figures, they think, actually, yes, I would like to buy back. Sorry, have you got, do you want me to switch off?
Thank you, thank you Chairman. Thank you for that update. Do they get pension advice?
There is a significant guidance with the, so there's the covering letter. There's the breakdown of the figures and there's quite a lot of frequently asked questions. And what we've been doing is updating those frequently asked questions in light of some of the queries that's been coming back. Because of course, even though you can buy back to your continuous start date, some people are still saying, well, what date do I put on the form? So they know what the worst case scenario is to buy back for the whole of the service, but they can choose any date they want. So it's things like that that we are refining just to stop limit the number of calls, because we are such, there's literally only one person dealing with this work. And if they're dealing with lots of queries, they can't be providing the estimates. So I hope that reassures you a bit more, but ultimately it's their decision. If they want to take pensions advice, it's really down to them as the individual. We're not providing it as an organisation. And we don't normally provide pensions advice like that.
Thank you, for obvious reasons, you know, I know that you're not a pension advisor, but is there, through the service, are there any signposts? You give advice, please, please take up pension advice if the frequently asked questions don't answer your queries. Do we advise them to get advice?
Sorry, that is in there, but of course we don't give them then direct links to advisors, if, yeah.
Sorry, there's just a question for me. I think it's a valid point that obviously pensions advice is specific to the individual. Everybody's individual case is slightly different. However, the understanding of Matthews Second Option Exercise, if all the communications by letters and written communication alone, I think there's possibility for misunderstandings. I wondered if there was any work that could be done in alternative methods of engagement, such as an awareness session online or something like that, something that people could listen to.
Okay, the other thing that we do is actually throughout, whether it's Matthews or Sergeant, we've always put a named contact on there and more than one. So it will be my name and it will be a colleague of mine, Nicola's. So they can ring up if they've got any immediate questions and we answer those. Because usually the ones that I fielded, you don't need professional advice to be able to just answer the question they've got. So we do do that as well. We put things in the bulletin, the LGA have actually put a number of like podcasts and there's the member website. So a lot of thought has been given to providing information. I suppose then it's, you can give that information, but what you can't do is force someone to either watch the podcast or read the stuff. But you can, we just say it's available and give them the links.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've just mentioned about the 21 individuals that we will be writing to again to say, are you sure you don't want to take up the option? Because we don't know if there will be a further opportunity. So we still, despite a number of reminders, as you know, we've, we've used many available options to get the word out there to people. Because these are people that have worked in the service, they've not been able to join the pension scheme. We don't have any payroll records for them, so as you know, we use the search, what do we use? It was the company to try and find the addresses to write to them in the first place. We use things like social media networks, we've used the FBU. But still, we have got 343 people that have not responded. And as we said at previous boards, we've really exhausted all avenues. You know, we keep the chief fire officer and the deputies up to date, because of course, sorry, I ought to say the assistant chief fire officer's, not the deputies. So when they go out to stations and they're getting calls, comments from members of the service, they're up to speed on what's happening. So they can keep repeating some of the messages that we're putting out as well. So currently, the deadline for sending in the completed options forms to say, yes, they do want to get the costs, is actually the 31st of March this year. However, the Home Office are currently consulting on changes to legislation. And one of which is a 12-month extension to this Matthews Second Options Exercise, which would then mean the deadline is the 31st of March 2026. Because there will, if, there will be no other opportunities after, after that. And as we said, we don't even know if there will be a third options exercise. Right, so just on the practicalities. So the costs for the buyback are being calculated at the moment. And what we're doing is we're sending them in line with the LGA priority order. They had a priority order one, two and three. Of the 150 that are in priority one, 103 have been sent so far. Each calculation has to be done individually and is quite time consuming, because there's lots of fields to be able to pull the data through into the breakdown of the figures that the individual gets. So progress is slow but steady. And I'm just going to put a bit about West Yorkshire Helen, so if the things change, if you can update me on this. So when we get the forms back, from the individual to say, yes, they want to take the buyback option up, we then send everything through to West Yorkshire, although we've not been able to do any yet to date. And then West Yorkshire, of course, they're getting not just our own forms, but they're getting forms from all their other FRA clients. So I just didn't mean to move that out of the way. And what they're, what West Yorkshire have said to us, that they're going to process the active members who will be retiring soon and also the special deferreds who are over 60. I'm presuming that's still the current situation Helen.
Yes. Yes, they're the priority ones as far as at the moment.
Yeah, so we are managing people's expectations as well. So when they come through to people like myself or Nicola, we're actually saying to people, you know, it could take potentially up to maybe three months.
There's probably a bracket of people who, if they take up the second options, would be able to retire earlier than they otherwise would.
That shouldn't, that's not really the case, because they can't get the, regardless of how little, how much or little service you've got in the modified scheme or the Matthews, your retirement age is 55, so service doesn't change that.
Right, okay. I was just wondering if there would be anybody who's disadvantaged by falling the wrong side of the priority order. And if they were to take the second options up, would be able to retire earlier, and you don't think that's the case?
No. I mean, it would only, they've got to be 55 to retire from active membership. And it may be that the choosing not to retire at the moment because the pension, the pension's not as big as they want it to be and signing up to the Second Options Exercise could change that. But I would hope that they would go through Liz's team and that their case from providing the calculations could be moved. Because, because the retirement of that member basically changed, or the upcoming retirement of that member basically changes the priority for them.
That's the perfect answer. That's exactly what I was thinking, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right, and the last area I wanted to cover is the pension dashboards. Obviously Helen mentioned it with the West Yorkshire update, but I forgive a bit more meat on the bones. So West Yorkshire Pension Fund will be connecting to the Money Helper Pensions Dashboard. And the Money Helper is the government service managed by the Money and Pensions Service. The Fire Pension Scheme, as well as other public sector schemes, will go live by the end of October this year. But private sector schemes are actually going live before the public sector schemes. So there might actually be some lessons learned, which we can take account of. The Pensions Regulator will continue as the scheme's primary regulator. And there are obviously fines associated to the dashboard related breaches, which can be up to £5,000 per individual scheme member breach and a £50,000 in other cases, but hopefully we won't have to. Right, so scheme members will be asked to formally nominate West Yorkshire Pension Fund and their integrated service provider, Bravara, as our preferred choice to join with the Money Pension Dashboard ecosystem. And it is proposed that the Fire Pension Board recommend this course of action. West Yorkshire have identified and been testing matching criteria that Helen had mentioned with their internet service provider. And they wish to use a standard set for all their clients. Matching can be done in a number of ways and the Pension Dashboard Programme have suggested three primary keys on the first pass, such as date of birth, national insurance number and surname. And then if this fails to match, a secondary set of second pass would be used to establish whether this is the member of the scheme. And it's things like, in fact, I've listed them, I won't go through all of them, but I've listed them on the, the update. And in the testing exercise, which consisted in excess of 200,000 members, but that wasn't just the Fire Pension Scheme, it was also the local government pension scheme, they had successful matching in excess of 94% in all samples. So just to reiterate, we're asking the board to recommend to the scheme manager, Andrew Crocombe, that we nominate West Yorkshire Pension Fund to be our nominated contact. And also we've updated the plan as well, haven't we, about risks and issues?
So do we need to discuss that point at all in terms of, is everyone in agreement? Yeah, happy to propose. Yes, we've got an agreement then. Do we need to log that as an action at all or would that be? Yeah.
I'll cover it in the minutes under a resolution.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks for that update Liz. And as always, I think we appreciate you've got a massive job to do, particularly with these very complex cases to deal with and a team that works very hard around them. So it's important from both sides that we have an understanding of the work you're doing when we're placing demands on you and communicate as effectively as possible. Thank you.
And what I will do is I'll pass those thanks on to the team, because although I front a lot of this stuff, actually for the Matthews, it's not me personally. So we've actually got two members, well, as I mentioned, there's three of us, two actually concentrating on that piece of work, but I will pass those thanks on.
Castle Corey.
Thank you. And I know she's not on screen at the moment. I'd like to also thank Helen for supporting you. And, you know, she's, she's not shy at telling us when we've been a little bit slow. So thank you very much Helen.
Pleasure.
Excellent. Okay, so thanks for that update on current issues. The next agenda point is the Fire Pension Board Plan. Does everybody have a copy of the plan they can refer to? So in terms of open items on the forward plan, we've got, starting at 2117, is that correct on? Yeah, so the TPR Public Service Governance and Administration Survey, Liz?
Yeah, I think that's due out in January, sometime this month, isn't it? Sorry, I've just realised it is January now. Oh dear. Sometime, I haven't received it yet.
Okay. 2118, Pensions Auto Enrollment, that's next month. So when that arrives, we'll deal with that in normal capacity.
Yes, unfortunately I've got the, the joy of, since we had pensions auto enrollment in the council. Yes, it's fallen into myself, but I have been training up all the colleagues as well. So the knowledge is being cascaded through the HR service, but we've got that firmly on our radar.
Okay. And then in terms of a bit further ahead in April, we need to provide the year-end return to the Home Office in terms of the Fire Pension Top-Up Grant. Do you foresee any issues with that?
Yeah, and then of course, that's where Naomi, our finance colleagues, would pick up that as well.
Okay, so that's all in hand. So that's the action plan. To the training records. To the training records, I think we're pretty much up to date. Anyone who's due any training has made arrangements. I think Paul, you've got some training scheduled. Is there anything else on the horizon or that might be available to us? We could take advantage of in terms of training, if you will, Liz? No? Okay then, so I think, happy to agree with the training records. And then the risk register. So in terms of outstanding risks, not a great deal has changed here, has it, in terms of previous risks? If we pick out the most prominent risks, I think the, there are no high residual risks. But if we look at some of the medium ones, some member data incomplete, inaccurate. Do you consider any changes in that at all?
Yes, what we have been doing, in fact, I was just looking at the number where it talks about recruit a dedicated pension support within LCC. As you know, Richard Toon is the overall manager for HR admin, pensions administration and payroll. Now, what he's been able to do is recruit someone into, that will just be heading up the pensions team and it will be a pensions manager. And they are due to start at the beginning of March. So we need to perhaps then look at the scores for that.
Yes, this is M2, lack of resource, would that be?
Yeah.
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 So currently, the residual risk is medium, isn't it? Are you thinking we can downgrade that risk potentially? Would everybody be in agreement with the downgrading that risk to a medium? So the potential would be reduced, yeah. So reduce the potential to a lower rating. The impact potentially would stay the same, wouldn't it? The impact would be unaffected, but the potential is reduced. So yeah, we'll take that action. You happy with that, Tom? Record of that? Yeah. The next medium risk is this immediate detriment line here, M5. So not combined with legal ruling, financial detriment to employees. The potential for it is classed as two, which is still relatively low. But the impact is quite high at three. Do you agree that stays as it is? There's no change there? In terms of the LGA guidance is being sought, the national framework has been developed and the additional resource allocated to support the process. Do you think the additional resource allows us to downgrade that risk as well?
Yeah, I'm just thinking on this one Helen, because we had, because we, prior to the legislation coming in, we did process some retirements and of course, we did it under the immediate detriment framework. And we're awaiting some guidance, I think, some further guidance on that. So maybe we just, I think I am right in saying that, aren't I?
Right, so we leave that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think, I think what you're waiting for is the guidance coming out from LGA which will kind of say the steps that need to be done in terms of putting immediate detriment cases into the position that they need to be now the age discrimination legislation is in place. And until you get that, one, you don't know if there are any kind of detrimental issues that a member may have. And you don't know how big the workload is of what you're going to need to do. So I think it's probably still a reasonable risk.
Okay, so we agree to leave that unchanged. A1, the member data incomplete and inaccurate, this is around closely liaison with payroll to avoid inaccuracies in the data, isn't it? Do we see that that risk has changed at all? This is A1.
Helen, do you feel from West Yorkshire that, say, the HR admin and payroll team are giving inaccurate data on a regular basis from Lincolnshire?
I don't really know. I haven't asked the question recently. So I don't know whether anybody feels that there's been any kind of change or improvement.
Yeah, and I know that they-
We can maybe ask the question for your next meeting on that one.
Yeah, and I know that they get escalated to me anyway as the HR business partner.
Okay.
Yeah, so I haven't had any escalations recently. So if that's, obviously if that's a guide, then yes, there's been improvements.
So I think we leave it as it is for the moment and reflect on it after a bit more time, if that's okay. The lack of skilled resources at A4, within LCC and West Yorkshire Pension Fund. Do you think that the additional resources you mentioned earlier address that risk in any sense?
Well, from the council's point of view, we've actually recruited successfully a pensions person. Admittedly, they don't have a background in fire pensions, it's actually NHS pensions. But what I have raised with Richard Toon is there also is some formal fire pensions training that the LGA are developing. And I've been keeping him up to speed as well. Because not only will he have the pensions manager, he'll have hopefully at some point a pensions team leader as well as the administration team. So the LGA are actually putting quite a lot of resource into the induction into fire pensions and formal training. And it will be a recognised formal training qualification as well. So, but obviously it hasn't started yet.
So we'll leave the risk unchanged. Agreed. Yeah. And this last one, A5, is a new one this time. So the pensions dashboard, you mentioned it in your update Liz. Can you just explain why that's on the risk register and why we've assessed it to that level?
Yeah, it was just, it was suggested that with it being, as well as the sergeant age discrimination and the Matthews and the knowledge you needed to do those, that the pensions dashboard ought to be included in the risk register. So all of the fire pension boards have been suggested that it should be put on the risk register, which is why I'm now just giving the updates, which are provided by West Yorkshire on the pension dashboard itself. But of course, as we mentioned, they've been going through the testing phase. You're going to formally recommend as a board that West Yorkshire are our named contact. And I think it's just as it unfolds and we get the updates, we can just keep reviewing this one.
Agreed, so that's to remain unchanged on the register. Perfect, thank you. So that concludes the Pension Board Plan. Agenda point seven is a Pension Scheme Bulletin update from Liz. Do you have anything additional to add on that?
Yeah, I provided the full update, which was included in the pack, but I just want to pick a few things out, just to put it on people's consciousness. So in the November bulletin, and this is to do with the Sergeant Age Discrimination Remedy, and we've talked about the immediate detriment, just in that conversation about the plan, hasn't it? And it was about receiving that guidance. But also, I put the numbers on there, how many we had, because there was like a category one and category two member. And it, Beverley and Britain, who are the legal providers, are currently establishing that guidance with the LGA. There was also the proposed changes to the member contribution rates that would be coming in in October of this year. Again, we published lots of things in the weekly bulletin. I did a reminder as well in the weekly bulletin. I know the FBU were quite keen on inputting into this as well. So the consultation started on the 20th of November for that one. I put the link into the consultation. And then it was also the three areas why they felt they needed to make the changes. So all of that has gone in the weekly bulletin, the link to the consultation and also the information on the members' website. For the December bulletin, for the Age Discrimination Remedy, we've sort of brief, Helen briefly mentioned this, which is to do with the annual benefit statement and the remedial service statement. So this is something that all those in scope of Sergeant will be receiving. As Helen mentioned, they're hoping to go out between now and the 31st of March. And all it does, it gives them members. What have I put on there? Sorry. Yeah, that was it. So it provides illustrations to allow them to compare the benefits available in relation to membership during the remedy period. Yeah, okay, I think that's probably as much as I need to say on that one. And then there was an article on the Matthews Second Options Exercise about, as I mentioned, there is a consultation about extending that deadline. Because at the moment, the deadline is 31st of March this year. So that's it on the bulletins, thank you.
Thanks Liz. It may be of interest to the committee that there's an engagement session on the contribution structure and I'll be attending on the 21st of January and maybe be able to bring back some information from that. So agenda point eight is the Fire Pension Officers Group. Do you have an update from that, Liz?
I don't, you're sick of the sign of my voice, weren't you? You don't have to answer that one, that was a rhetorical question. Right, so the North East Region Fire Pensions Office Group, or NERFPOG, as I usually like to say, took place on the 27th of November. So key points were Matthews Sergeant interaction, because I mentioned earlier that some that are in scope of Sergeant are also in scope of Matthews. But then the LGA are actually going to provide further guidance on this interaction. So we're just awaiting that. For the Matthews death grants, West Yorkshire are intending to provide some guidance once the process has been developed for these. The Matthews compensation, the Home Office are looking at developing guidance for this. And there's also a Matthews working group that the LGA will be setting up. Pension saving statements. At the time of that meeting in November Helen, West Yorkshire were working on the remedy pension saving statements. Have they been done now, do you know?
No, we're still working on them. There's some being sent. And so we had a dedicated day yesterday trying to get more checks because we've got quite a lot calculated, just not checked in the statements sent. So we've, as I say, we had a dedicated day yesterday. We've just had a catch-up today. And we're going to be kind of, those people who are able to check are going to be kind of putting in half a day all of next week, each day next week to try and get as many sorted and the PSS sent. So at the minute, I'm not really in a position to give any kind of accurate position. But probably in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to tell you who should have had a statement, who has had a statement and out of those who looks like they've got a charge, tax charge to pay to HMRC. So that'll be, as I say, once we've got, we've done this dedicated work, then we'll be in a position to give you a much clearer picture.
Just two more from that meeting. So there's the Local Pension Board Chairs Meeting. So this was something new that had been set up. And the first meeting was on the 22nd of November. They had 25 attendees. The issues that were discussed were the Matthews Second Options Exercise and the Sergeant Age Discrimination Remedy and the resources connected with these two fire pension projects. And a further meeting is being held on the- And then the final thing, I made reference to it when I talked about the qualification that the LGA are developing. They've also got induction materials, so anyone that's new to fire pensions, there is a PowerPoint slide deck, but it has lots of links to various resources. And again, you've got the link to that resource. And it's the kind of thing as well that I share with the Richard Toon, who's the overall pensions, HR admin and payroll manager. And that's it, thank you. Unless Helen, you think I've missed anything?
No, I don't think you have covered all the salient points, I think.
Brilliant, thanks Liz. So the next agenda point is an update from the Scheme Advisory Board, which Helen, you able to give that to us?
Right, yeah, so the last Scheme Advisory Board was held on the 12th of December. So the Home Office just really, as at every meeting, the Home Office kind of just give a verbal update on where they are with things and what they're concentrating on. So mainly at that one, it was, yeah, being able to get the Matthews consultation out. And also obviously they're concentrating on the contribution adjustment consultation as well. GAD attended and they gave an update on the, what the 2024 valuation is looking like, what data they've got, what, you know, what data they're wanting and a few timelines. And then they also gave some more update on the Matthews Two Calculator and manual cases. LGA themselves, they gave an update on kind of what they'd completed in the last, since the last meeting and what their key areas of work were, which mainly covered, as with all the meetings, it's the same. They gave an update on staffing, basically to say that Sandra, who had been working there, was leaving at the end of December. So with Claire Johnson on maternity leave, that was just leaving Tara. So they've got some kind of additional support for Tara and were trying to recruit to one of the vacant posts. But I don't think it had been successful at the point of the meeting. And I certainly haven't seen any announcements about new staff there yet. So at the moment, as I say, it's Sandra. And she was getting support from Claire Alcock, who is the lead for the NPCC for Police. But she, obviously she used to be the lead at LGA for fire, so she's providing support. And I think they're doing as much kind of crossover work as possible. And she was also being supported by the boss, the manager at LGA, somebody called Joe Donnelly. But I've just seen that Joe Donnelly has got a job as the Chief Executive of London. So I think that support disappearing as well. So I think in the short term, LGA are probably going to be struggling with their resource. So basically then, they covered sergeant areas, the implementation, the rollout, what they've done. They covered what, you know, what they've been working on for Matthews. And as Liz has just said, they talked about where they were with training and what they're looking to offer. So there is a really, really substantial set of slides for induction training for members of staff who deal with fire pensions in fire authorities. And it runs to 180 odd pit slides. So it's really substantial, it's really big. Now, LGA, I think, are happy, will provide training, but there will be a cost for that training. It's not going to form part of your levy. But also what you can, if you wanted to, somebody wanted to look at it, you can break it down into different sections and do kind of small sections at a time or even just get your staff looking at these individual sections. So they've made that available, that's on the FPS Reg's website. And then they just confirmed that they were looking at producing a fire fighter pensions qualification and were hoping to work with the Pensions Management Institute, PMI, for that. And they were hoping that it would be a level two award. So that's quite good, that's probably more administrator based. They then recap on the annual meeting that was- They then recap on the annual meeting that was held last September and that was pretty much it from the last Scheme Advisory Board.
Perfect, thanks very much for that Helen. So that brings the agenda to the end with the only thing to discuss, the date of the next meeting. The next meeting is set for the 14th of March. So thanks to everyone for attending, good to see you Helen and see you next time.